Police are on. We have, we have, we take care of all of them. Whenever, anytime we have an event, everybody watches everybody, everybody takes care of each other. You know, and I mean, we don't need police out there maintaining, and it's just, I mean, it is what it is. It is, the vibrant world is different than
civilian.
Civilian lifestyle out here having the ball game or having the firework show. You know, it's just, we all there, we all take care of each other, no matter what. I mean, that's just the way it is, that's the way to do it.
And they even said that they can do like, um, a fee for people to come in and that can go towards.
You know, the city could charge a five dollar parking fee, you pocket the money, for people to park, you get through the park, just there. You know, I mean, even if the vipers come in, you can charge a five dollar parking fee.
I don't think we're, I don't think we can do that.
Can't do that?
We can always have bike shows and everything. We can always do ourselves.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'd rather go to a fundraiser twice a time, whatever it is, community, I'm not. But I do have to think about liability and I have to think about staff. Liability insurance. I've, you know, I've got people calling me up now, asking something out, and, and, uh, we know what's your dates and, so I don't know, I mean, it's up to y'all when you want to act.
We can, we can take it to a vote, but I mean, I think that, you know, put something together that say, hey, this is how this is going to be structured.
I mean, like, like I said, this, as far as the staff, you really, I mean, I don't know. You got somebody cooking out there to feed people, um, you know, and you got drinks and, you know, sodas and water and, you know, even, even if it's a donation, then you're allowed to have beer and that's it, not liquor. So, none of that, we just say, and as it was, it would be like the donations, that way you're not going to make a pocket, and it's just donations, and it's donated to whoever. But at the end of the day, you know, it, we, we just go to a place and show up, if we have people cooking, they cook, and you serve, and that's how you, you know, get people there.
And then also, they bring in revenue for the town, for like, and their vipers going to gas up and stuff like that.
They may come down to eat, or whatever, I mean, it's, it is what it is.
Well, I mean, I think that we, we can, we can, we can agree to disagree, agree to, you know, at least have them to bring something back that we can look at, that gives us a, a more solid, you know, idea of what we actually be dealing with. So, we can just make a motion in a second and, and vote on it, and then we'll just move from there.
Well, we'll make the plan up on paper, however we gotta do it, show what we're thinking, um, and I would say, this is November is holiday time, I would say, possibly, if we do it, I'd say we can have some set up for December, if not, we can start keeping it running.
I make a motion to, oh, sorry, I make a motion to help the vipers to hold an event, pending a date and details.
Now, a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
In their favor? Motion carries. Appreciate you, ma'am.
They might.
Wait, take my call.
Yes, sir.
We've made contact with them.
All right, that'll work.
God bless my.
And if it does, and if it does help out with this, I am the president of all the chapters of the whole club. So, a lot goes through me, and I have a lot on my shoulders, like Bruce does. Trust me, there's a lot there, and we do a lot of running, so we run a lot, but we do thank God.
We did, after a time for the kids, uh, reach out to the community of, like, a older woman with a grandson with a town center. We, one year, we took out of our own pocket to go down and build this place for us. And this lady just broke up Brian.
Wow.
She said, "Thank you," and I said, "Don't thank me."
Thank you.
All right, um, next thing I have on, uh, my list is, the, uh, this is just a tenth, um, Christmas parade, um. I know, uh, it could be not enough time, I do know that. Um, I spoke with the, uh, not the head pastor, not Pastor John, but, um, what's the assistant pastor over there? This lady, assistant pastor.
Oh, there's several.
That, that deserves.
The one that did the train, Mr. Martin?
The o- the older man, that'd be in the office.
There's several, that's what I'm saying, there's several now, but I think you talked to Nick.
Anything I can tell you to plan?
I thought, I think you talked to Nick.
No, it's the older man, he runs the, uh, he does the, uh.
Then you talked to Doug.
Yeah. He does the Bible studies.
Doug, Doug.
Okay, well, I spoke with him, and, um, we were talking briefly about, because I wanted to try to, uh, interact with the, what they have going with the, uh, the festival lights, um, Bethlehem, um, having a parade, and we discussed that it possibly could work, um, where we have the parade, and then everybody go from the parade directly to the church event, instead of having the festival, so we don't clash, you got to wait, um, because I wouldn't want to clash with what they got going on, um, because most towns do have Christmas festivities, and we don't. Um, so that's why I was trying to get a Christmas parade, um, I have looked up about the Christmas parade, um, it takes like six weeks to get this approved, and it's seven, six, six weeks, or it's, it depended on the, the length of the parade, is how, how many it gonna be in the parade, and the timeframe. Um, take like six weeks to get it done, to get it approved with the DOT. Um, also, um, I have did the same thing with the parade for, to close the lane for the breast cancer awareness, it only took me two weeks to get that all approved. Um, which we did a partial lane closure, so we did the same exact route as the parade route, which would be the same route, that route for the, uh, Christmas parade. These are the list of people that would be interested in having the Christmas parade in Bronson. Ace Harbor, Russell Loop, Premier Beauty Lounge, Cricket, Russell Pharmacy, Russell Smoke Shop, Russell Library, Backbridge Farm, gave them the phone number and everything, Shakers, New Beginner Entertainment, Julie's Diner, Tony Sixty-Six Rachel, and Bakery, Capital City Bank, and Seacoast. So, we do have a list of people that would be interested in having this parade, and participate in having the foot. So, that shows right there that it can be possible for it to be done. Only thing that we need to do is getting the, uh, uh, agreement to have the partial for the, for, for the lane closure. Um, the dates that I have is for December seventeenth, which will relate to the, uh, Church Baptist Church. If not that date, December the twentieth. And that's what I have on the Christmas.
Seventeenth is the night of Bethlehem for?
It's the, um, Christmas on Fourth Day.
And December twentieth is the Saturday. So, those are the dates that, that can be workable for that.
Well, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just play devil's advocate, because I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say this before I say anything. We had a conversation way, way back, when we first came on this council. And the discussion was, because you were in charge of, of events, a list of events that you would like to take in this year, or, or even going into next year. And we get nothing, now you say, you said the seventeenth is what, five weeks away from?
It's exactly six.
First of all, you never told me to list any, you told me for, no, you told me for whenever the previous years comes, so we can have all them lined for, so when the next year comes, we can all have that order, that's what you told me.
I didn't mean to misword with that, ma'am, because we had.
And I told you, I'm being, I'm new on the council, so everything's gonna be, the first year, everything's gonna be throw that to the first year, because I have not never been on the council, so everything is not gonna be planned accordingly.
No reason for it to not.
The Trumpet Tree's weren't planned accordingly.
Trumpet Tree been going on for twenty years.
It still wasn't.
I took them from Burger and Hot Dog, Trumpet Tree's fifteen years ago, when I was on the council. So, that, that's, that's not even something you can use as a comparison to what.
Breast cancer wasn't planned accordingly, it grew.
It grew, it's been going on. I'd say, I did.
We stopped, we stopped three or four years. Just about three or four years.
This is what we're not gonna do, I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna argue this point, because I'm only one person and one vote, my vote gonna be an unequivocal absolute no this year, and then, and it's.
Yeah, another thing too, when I put the bits on, you not even helping with it, as much. You just show up.
Well, first of all, that, so, the list of people that wants the, the parade, who is interested in seeing a Christmas parade, really does speak volumes, first of all.
Thank you.
Um, I do agree that this would be crunching time for getting a Christmas parade together, and it really will be crunching time. Um, but I also think where there's a will, there's a way, um, and I know that that might not be favorable to everybody, um, but I also know that this year has been so hard for so many people, it really has. Some of the people in Bronson might only get to go to what is going on at the first Baptist Church. Like, and I, unfortunately, things are dwindling down on the government that are gonna make it so much harder for our families at the holiday time. So, as much as I feel like this is not a, not the most responsible decision, I would support trying to come together for a Christmas parade, only because of how horrible this year has been for a lot of families. Um, but I completely understand anybody who would object and not agree, I, I completely understand that.
I, I talked to Ms. Brennan, Sunday morning, because I asked her point blank, how do you get Highway twenty-seven closed? What she told me was, you have to have it approved in a town council meeting. Then you have to come back the next meeting and have the minutes of that meeting approved. So, you got two sets of documentation there. With that, you go to the sheriff's department, you have to get a letter from the sheriff's department saying that they will participate in closing the road. With that documentation, with all that documentation, you apply to the DOT. The DOT can take time to approve. So, she starts planning the October Hanukkah Parade in June. So, then I called Chamber of Commerce, that plans the actual Christmas parade in Chieftain, and they're, you know, well into that for this year. And I asked them, "When do you start planning your parade?" The Christmas parade is planned starting about July, in August. In August, they have to, um, put in their permits with the town as part of the start of getting nineteen closed down with the DOT. So, again, it's a, it's a multi-meeting, multi-documentation process. There's also budget that has, you know, that, that factors in, um, whether you want to like, if you're gonna have a Christmas parade, most people think there's Santa involved. So, they hire Santa, well, that's about a thousand bucks. This year, this year, it, their theme is Blue Christmas, so not only will they have Santa, they will have Elvis. So, Elvis is also a dog, he's a, you know, those impersonators, but anyway, so there, so we discussed, you know, a bunch of the parameters. Their expenses are about thirty-five hundred dollars for that Christmas parade, the signage permits, the impersonators, that kind of thing. So, I, I did talk with them about it, I talked with, with Ms. Brennan about the process, but it's entirely up to y'all.
I'm just gonna say this, and, and I don't need no apology or anything like that, but I think personally, I take offense to you saying what I do and don't do when it comes to this town. Because number one, we need to have a, a application process for getting business, if it wasn't for something I kept from the last town council, they got processed through this town. The information I bring to this council, it's not, I mean, I'm not, I'm gonna say what I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna get on this and post everything that's going on with the town, because that's, that's not what this is for me. I have a job to do in this town, and I feel like I do it quite well.
You do.
I know I inform that town manager of the things that need to go on in this town, and I ain't doing it because of something, some big shot, I'm doing it because it's what I've done. And I know six weeks is too quick to plan a parade coming through town, because of all the things that has to happen. I'm not against anything you wanna do. And I say, I'm, I promise you, I take offense to you saying what you said, because I know, I know.
I say, don't you say the same thing?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna try it in a second, let me try it, Mr. Stacy, please, listen.
And you might say, that would be good to happen.
I did, and it was actually my idea to end up at, at the Baptist Church, however, however, I've told you, when you asked me my opinion, that it would have to be voted on. We are six weeks away from that event. I'm gonna be honest with you, and you probably not speak to me for a month, and that's fine, but I was very disappointed in the, in the Latin thing that we did. We had one Latin food vendor show up, the music was not even Latin, nothing else was Latin, and it was supposed to be about their heritage. We spent way too much money on a port-a-potty for about forty people that showed up. That event cost so much money, and it was just thrown together, much like this will be thrown together.
Okay, since you say that, I'm gonna say something too. Since you say that, okay, first of all, we have these events, okay, I'm gonna tell you, just.
We should wait until next Christmas, no, you interrupted me.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
We should wait until next Christmas and then do the parade, and now I'm finished.
All right, now, you talking about these events, okay?
Yes, I want events, I want community.
We supposed to be together, right?
But it needs to be done well.
Hold up, hold up, hold up.
Reggie, it needs to be done well.
Hold up. We supposed to be together, we have all these events, but you have all these vendors that come out there and, and be in your area, your, your, your land, and you, you don't even try to invite them to any of, to be a vendor for any of the events. You should be, uh, saying, "Hey, uh, we got events for this, for this, uh, for the town, so some of y'all come participate here."
I have, yeah, I have contacted.
No, because I'm, which is, they, you ain't never told me nothing about any kind of events that we have.
I just wanna, I just wanna say, before we get off of events, because I do want to make sure I say that for several years, um, Mr. Schuler, Captain Michael Schuler, has said that he has wanted to see May Day back in this town. And I know that we got some people out there in the audience who probably would like to see that as well, and then we are in November. So, I do, I would like to, if we could, try to plan to have a May Day. Um, I know that a lot of our elders have a wonderful time back in the day when they had May Day, um, so if that is something that we could put on there, and that's, that's a long time away, we got a long time to figure out how we're gonna do it, but I just think that, that we owe it to our elders to bring something back for them.
I love that, Virginia. I can tell you, I'm, I'm, what, on a committee?
I don't care, whatever we have to do to get it done, because, I mean, I would like, I would like for Mr. Schuler to be able to go, you know? He's talked about it for years, and I think we owe it to our elders.
Well, yeah, he was asking me if I could get it on, too.
It's slipped my mind.
You've actually talked, I've heard you talk about it, Reggie, I've actually heard you saying May Day.
I just don't want us to forget about it, and I, I do wanna, I, I think we owe it to them.
Let's get back to the business at hand, and, and make a motion on, on this parade.
I would say, if, 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 if we have to, we need to do something relating to the Christmas season.
Well, it's, let's.
If we, hold up, if we, if we, like I said, first of all, this list, you know I got this list, you know who told me that? You told me to get a list of people.
I told you, I told you about.
You told me to get a list of people, and if you got.
I didn't say nothing about the parade.
Please, please, I'm not gonna lie, you told me to get a list of people, and that's why I have this here.
I told you to get a list.
You're gonna say, get a list of people that will be interested in having it, and that way you can have something to show the council, okay? And that's what I did.
For, for when?
For when we have our meeting.
For when the parade, did I say anything about the parade?
That's what I asked you about the Christmas parade, I said, could I ask you yourself, I said, do you, I said, do you think it would be a good idea to have a Christmas parade? I say, because, you know, we ain't never had one that I know of.
Reggie, what's wrong with waiting until next year?
Listen, we can, but still, I don't want nobody sitting here making me look like.
You don't, I, it's a wonderful idea, I told you that, but I think we need to do it next year, when we have time to make it grand.
So, we don't have to do it, but still, everybody beating me down because I, I'm doing what I'm supposed to do.
So, how about this?
How about this?
So, don't have a Christmas parade, so what we need to do is, don't have a Christmas parade, we can at least have Santa come in the building here, where these kids can have something where they can take pictures, tell us something that's Christmas oriented.
I actually have a customer who goes to Santa.
That's good, you better have one, because there'd be books.
I know one.
And I know one too, and he's not, uh, how much you say it?
I don't know how much that is.
They're two hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah, this one's two hundred dollars too. You said, you said, two, two hundred dollars is flat.
If we're needing more time to, to organize events, maybe we should start thinking about what we're gonna do around Martin Luther King's birthday.
Yeah, I understand what I'm just saying, like, when I, it's like I run an event, it's like, ugh, we, we can't do this, it's all flaws again.
It's a great event.
It ain't no every time, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm being disrespectful, and I, and I'm trying, I'm trying to sit here in such a way.
Don't, it's not every time, it's like. Not like it's impossible, I mean, can't do it.
Nope, but the only thing that we've done that was some, a planned event, that was an event that's been annual, is the Trumpet Tree, and it was very successful. And it fell on the same day as.
And the breast cancer was.
And the breast cancer was.
And it was successful.
And the breast cancer was successful too.
But the thing, we don't have a farmers market, it's because there was not enough research done, and enough people reached out to, to make, see if you can have participation in this market. It was just, let's put it out here on social media and help people come, that's what it was, this, 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 this Santa festival was pretty much the same thing. And with ICE, I even mentioned, with ICE being like they are right now, these Hispanic people ain't gonna congregate, because they know the opportunity to get picked up is even greater if they congregate in groups, and I said those things, and I said, those two things are gonna make these harder to be successful, especially on a short notice.
They encourage.
Everything can't be on a short notice, now, we did have conversations when we first came on this council, about if you were else gonna have events, at least get them out there. And I, and that was a discussion, and, and I, and I don't even want to bite the tongue in that, we had that discussion about getting those things out there, so, we can start planning, I can tell you this, we didn't have nobody in the office when we first came on the council, now we got somebody in the office, you go in there, you shoot those out there to her, and she can start working on them, we not gonna work on them every day. As council people, I can tell you right now, we're not, Commissioner, Commissioner Kennedy, you're not gonna go out there every single day and go and sit in the office and work on the county businesses. You got your own jobs and stuff that you have to attend to, right? Correct? Don't have to, I voted for you, but, yeah, you got a home, but I know for a fact, as a council person, you're not gonna have a whole day to sit down and plan things like this, and it's not happening. So, so like I said, I'm gonna leave it there, I take offense to the fact that you said I'm not doing anything, and I really do take offense to that, because I know for a fact that. I ain't gonna say that.
Now, you say.
It sound like I'm.
You tell everybody else, they gotta have thick skin.
I got thick skin, trust me, I do, I got thick skin, I got thick skin, but, uh, I just, I can't, that's hard to let them go, when you telling me I ain't doing anything. I look for facts, well, facts on our brains on the table.
Stay in.
All right, so are we gonna have a motion for the parade, or are we gonna stay with that idea?
I make a motion to wait until next year for the parade, but work on it, because I think it's a great idea.
We got a motion. We get a second. We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion for, for.
We need to have Santa Claus come to these kids' house, I mean, for Christmas.
You didn't vote? You didn't vote?
We did, we did vote.
Oh, you did?
I, I would wait, I, I already heard it's a vote.
I will, because I mean.
All in favor?
Aye.
In their votes?
But I would like at least have Santa Claus, maybe, motion carries.
Motion carries.
And I can make a little super up?
What we used to do is, we used to have moving out of the park, if we had a plan that, that would've been a great, um, thing, I, my older children loved moving out of the park, it was everything, um, and then the fire truck used to bring Santa Claus in, and he would hand out some toys for toys. My older children absolutely loved that.
Why don't we combine Bike Night and Santa Claus? Why don't I get in touch with those guys, see if they know Santa Claus?
Bingo.
Put it all in one.
Bingo.
That sounds, what does that sound like?
Long as it's something, I just wanna stay with the seasons, you know, every time we have something, we need to have stuff.
Yep, let's do it.
Don't stop what's been good going, and then don't, and, and get, go backwards and not have nothing.
I make a motion.
Holiday season, have something.
I make a motion to ask Bike Night guys to get a Santa for their event.
Bring it to the town.
Bring it to the town.
A second.
All right, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
In their votes? Motion carries.
Nice.
We'll look into that.
Yep.
Anything else, you got anything else? And the next one, ain't enough time, but, um, I want to try to bring back the Fall Folk Festival that we used to have in Bronson, since, like, in the nineteen eighties, they brought it. Um, I have spoke to some people, uh, uh, talked, talked Elizabeth Phillips tonight and last week, um, she gave us some names.
When did they usually, when did they do that?
They normally do that around November.
I have a suggestion.
And I already know that, we want, definitely want to go better do that, because it's gonna be hard to put that together, I didn't know that.
I mean, it's a festival, why don't we just combine it with, um, Trumpet Tree? So, it lasts.
That's a lot.
No.
That's what we're doing. And Trumpet Tree has fell on the same day as the Christmas. Oh, and then every year.
Fall Folk Festival normally be like the end of, right after Thanksgiving, I mean, right, right, either right after Thanksgiving or right before.
I know over in Bill.
I did ask the, um, I did send a letter, uh, email to Linda Dean Cooper, asking if they were going to, if their Pioneer Day was successful enough, that they were going to do that again, because to me, it seems like that event is for, more for historical society than.
I heard it good.
Than not, so, and I did ask, I did ask her for a calendar of events, to try to do more events, because we should be supportive of the historical society, you know? So, she did not actually, she didn't respond to me yet, but to me, the, that kind of falls under the historical society more than it does the time.
Yeah.
Yes.
I remember when they had the Fall Folk Festival there in front of the Health Department, on that dirt grass. The only bad part about it, it was always the weekend of opening day of, that's the season. And a lot of people would rather go hunting instead of that, so, I would watch those dates, because if you wanna have a real big turnout, you might as well do it a weekend before or a couple of weekends after, just so everybody's got that first weekend out of their system, and I think you probably get some more participation instead of Saturday morning opening of that season.
I was gonna say, over in Bill, I used to have a plant over there, and when they do their Christmas parade, they have all of their crafters out there on the sides of the roads for people to shop, and that would be a, a good addition to, um, that would, like, combine the, a festival with the Christmas parade that you were talking about having. And any local vendors or local crafters would be able to sell their, their items.
All right, well, I mean, that's something, that's leaving me playing anyway, so.
That, 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 that.
Is that, is that, is that, is that it?
And I'm just gonna be honest with you, a lot, a lot of this stuff, when you stand playing, a lot of these festivals never been here, okay? We've never had this and this and that, you know? Breast cancer, we never had that here until I brought that here through myself. And I understand what you're saying about planning something, but if you ain't never had it here, how can you prepare to plan for something? And then, when you're on the first year of a council, you're gonna be bringing things forth, and then, so when next year, the next year comes, then you better plan accordingly, because you already got it set in stone, what months they gonna come in, up east of Texas. So, it's hard to plan something accordingly if you just bringing it, bringing it through, bringing it forth, bringing it forth.
Unless like Tracy said, if you know you're gonna do it, if you know you're gonna do it, then you got months to make phone calls, to involve other municipalities, to involve other people. That's what's gonna make it successful. It ain't gonna be successful through social media, it's not gonna happen.
And I forgot...
And that's why I say plan, that, and, and if you think that me saying these things to you put me against you, then I'm gonna leave you with that, let you go home, skip on that, because that's not where I am. But I, what I am not gonna do, and, and I got several examples. We threw the farmer's market up in a couple of weeks. We threw the Hispanic festival up in a couple of weeks. They didn't succeed, okay? That, that's the proof in the pudding right now. I mean, everything needs preparation. I, I, I coach football, and I ain't no way I can go into a football game on a Friday night and not know what that team is gonna be doing to me.[1759.15]